Welcome to our Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School School Committee Meeting. And if we could start, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Too many.
Okay, well then, I would like to ask Ms. Roxanne Grover to come up, please. And I'm sure you all know that she has been elected or chosen as Havrell's Educator of the Year. And we're very pleased.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Very proud of Whittier's Own. And how long have you been Whittier's Own?
I've been teaching at Whittier for forty years.
Oh.
I started in nineteen seventy-eight, my first job out of college.
Wow. And you've been here ever since?
I graduated from Havrell High School.
Nineteen seventy-three.
Yes, but Dicky, in nineteen seventy-three.
That is definitely what we can attribute your success to.
And a little interesting tidbit was, I started at Whittier November thirteenth, nineteen seventy-eight, and I won the Educator of the Year on November thirteenth, twenty eighteen. So it's forty years later to the date, so it was kinda like a...
That's wonderful. We're so proud and so glad that you're ours, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
If I could say one thing, Roxanne is somebody that always has a wonderful attitude in the building. She's great with our kids. The staff respect her and like her. I know in the PE and the Health Department, she runs the show down there, and she works really hard. And, you know, she has a real passion for what she does, and that's teaching health and physical fitness for our kids, and she's done a wonderful job. I've known Roxanne now for twelve years, and the Whittier is a much better place because you've been here, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I love the school, obviously, because I've stayed here as a career for my whole life, and I'm glad I had the opportunity to do that. Thank you for recognizing me.
And I think this calls for standing.
Oh, thank you.
Now we have the chorus.
Yep, they're gonna come in.
Okay.
Lisa's not. Tony said he might be late, but I didn't hear. He's been a little late.
It is a big group. Or may I put it this way?
This is where the urban, uh, music teacher was ordered in.
Here, who is able to do wonderful things with our chorus and our school play, so thank you, Linda, for giving up your evening, and kids, for thank you for giving up your evening for tonight, so.
Yeah. Thank you for having us.
Our concert is tomorrow night, I think, I still need to get this in.
Say goodbye to November. She must be on her way. The cold winds of December look like they're here to stay. Me, I'll just count the snowflakes as they start to fall. Getting lost in the beauty, the magic of it all.
And our eyes filled with wonder as the rain tears take to fly. It's Christmas Eve, bells will ring. Through the town we gather to sing. Christmas Eve has begun. Peace and love to everyone. Like the festive candles, they'll chase shadows away. With good friends and our families, share love and joy on this day. Winter winds will whisper through the shimmering lights. Never stars look brighter than on this glorious night. And our eyes filled with wonder as the rain tears take to fly. It's Christmas Eve, bells will ring. Through the town we gather to sing. Christmas Eve has begun. Peace and love to everyone. Christmas Eve, bells will ring. Through the town we gather to sing. Christmas Eve has begun. Peace and love to everyone. Christmas Eve. Christmas Eve. Christmas Eve. Christmas Eve.
I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, just like the ones I used to know. Where the treetops glisten and children listen to hear sleigh bells in the snow. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas. With every Christmas card I write. May your days be merry and bright. And may all your Christmases be white. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, just like the ones I used to know. Where the treetops glisten and children listen to hear sleigh bells in the snow. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas. With every Christmas card I write. May your days be merry and bright. And may all your Christmases be white.
We have one more.
I saw a tiny sleigh make its tiny way right across the sky.
There wasn't time to think, there wasn't time to blink before it zoomed right by.
And everything I knew I knew.
And everything that you knew too.
Is absolutely now untrue because without a doubt there is a Santa Claus. Santa Claus.
I just saw him too.
I just saw him.
Yet my whole life.
Yet my whole life.
He seemed fake to me.
Couldn't Santa see?
Couldn't Santa see?
What a fantasy.
What a fantasy.
He appears to be.
And everything I thought I thought is tangled up in one big knot.
The world out there has clearly got its flaws. If they can't say there is a Santa Claus.
And Rudolph's nose really glows and guides him through the night.
The beard like snow, the ho, ho, ho. I told you I was right.
And does this mean that Easter eggs are hidden by a rabbit? I just thought that I'd been hocus pocus.
You weren't hocus pocus.
And does this mean there's any truth to fairy tale fire too?
Come on, people, let's say hocus.
It's hard to be sedate or keep your head all straight when fairy tales come true. Though I can't complain, 'cause if I'm insane, that means you are too. So why don't we make a pact as solemn, but should be exact that Santa's real, in fact, he always was? I know I've had my doubts before, but now there's proof I can't ignore. So why deny it anymore? There is.
Yes, there is.
A Santa.
Wow. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Better than a PowerPoint demonstration.
Tomorrow's chorus is at seven o'clock.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Tomorrow night, seven?
Yeah. Is it seven?
Y'all have a good night.
Good night.
May all your Christmas be white.
What a great bunch.
It's the best.
What's next month?
All right, so, now we have the holiday float and the Allied Health Center. Are we going on a...
We're gonna take a tour.
A tour? All right.
Yes.
Okay, let's go.
Madam Chair.
All right, yes.
Move the approval of the minutes of the regular School Committee meeting on November fourteenth.
Catastrophe.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm being abstained as I was not here.
Okay, so, no discussion, hearing none, we'll take a vote, all in favor?
All in.
Opposed? None? Abstentions, one. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Move the approval of the treasurer's report for November. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstentions? No? Okay. All right, we have no old business posted. And Andrew, you are up.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch, and all of your school committee members. Peer-to-peer sponsoring the canned food drive now through December twentieth. The shop or homeroom that has collected the most cans will receive a breakfast on the last day of school before the holiday break. They will also be able to display the winning plate, uh, plaque, uh, for the year. It'll be a great way for the school to help feed the less fortunate for the holidays. Chorus, as you guys just saw, performed for us tonight, and they will also be performing in the Poets Inn on Tuesday for the luncheon. And their concert is Thursday, December thirteenth, at seven PM in the auditorium. They will be singing a selection of holiday secular songs, including a medley from the musical Hamilton. Jack Erlich, who is retiring this year, will be performing a song he composed, and Santa will be joining them too. It'll be a fun night for all, and the chorus is super excited to be performing. Chess Club is still meeting every Thursday after school. Currently, there are fifteen members, although attendance fluctuates weekly. All levels of player are welcome, and students are continuously changing partners to experience different strategies. The Key Club had a very busy month, starting with the Havrell Santa Parade. Some of the members were costume characters, and others helped collect donations along the route. They also volunteered at the Salisbury Sea Festival of Trees, helped ring the bells for the Salvation Army on two Saturdays, and volunteered at the Christmas Stroll in Havrell. This coming Saturday, they will be helping out at the Breakfast with Santa in Salisbury, and they are making plans to spend a few hours over vacation with the clients at the Salisbury Senior Center. In the meantime, they are discussing fundraising ideas for the spring and are looking forward, volunteer opportunities, in the coming months. Multicultural Club had a lovely team of members teach them how to play a popular Dominican game, Dominos. It was fun to hear about this game, and it was, and how popular it is with their families. At the next December meeting, another member is scheduled to teach us about her family's cultural Christmas traditions. The club is collecting codes for kids and adults as well through January third. Peer leaders met again and received more leadership training. This time, they discussed leaders in their own lives and what they admire about them, and how can, um, how they can emulate their leadership skills. Peer leaders have also been working with student government to help organize a fundraiser for the Whittier Holiday Fund. In addition, peer leaders have started brainstorming about how they can help with their freshman halftime show in January. The first robotics team has completed, completed most safety tests for the robot build members. The team has added a few more students, so they are approximately forty members. The hands-on performance testing is still underway, with each member completing under the direction of team mentor. This year's game challenge will be released on January fifth, and so by the next time the school committee meets, they will be able to describe the engineering challenges the team will have to overcome. Student government has been meeting to plan and organize the Candygram Holiday Fundraiser. This is a student-driven initiative, along with the guidance of administration, to raise money for the Holiday Fund. Student government also volunteered for the Festival of Trees in Salisbury. Currently, they're in the process of planning an event for the governor's visit in January. Boys' basketball had two days of tryouts and were able to divide the players into what we hope will be competitive varsity and junior varsity rosters. The varsity team has only four returning players, one of whom is currently injured, so they will be relying on many new faces for significant contributions to the season progresses. For girls' basketball, the team is very young and is made up of mostly freshmen and sophomores. This will be a very exciting year, as the young players are talented but will get varsity experience. They hope to grow and build chemistry through the young team and bring promising years to come. For wrestling, they are a young team with only one senior and six returning starters. There are a lot of new faces in the room with over, with over fifty percent of the team being brand-new wrestlers, ranging from freshmen to juniors. They are going to need some new guys to step up and learn quickly, because they will be filling some holes in the lineup. With that being said, there's a lot of athleticism on the team, and with continued hard work and the right mindset, they will be able to surprise themselves this season. The boys' hockey team, who co-ops with Amesbury, have some young talent and many Whittier students on the team. They're looking forward for the season and have high hopes. Thank you, and that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you. Andrew, will you just go back? Is it this coming Saturday, this week, that they're doing Breakfast with Santa?
Uh...
In Salisbury?
Uh...
I thought I hit missed it, but...
Yep, says this coming.
This coming Saturday.
This coming.
Breakfast with Santa in Salisbury.
Is it at the fire station or the senior center?
Senior center.
Senior center? And what time?
Uh...
Let me check with Mr. Perselli. He's here, and we can get...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good report.
Thank you.
Thanks. Very thorough. All right, we're moving on to the superintendent's report. Good evening, Madam Super, uh, Superintendent, Madam Superintendent.
No, thank you. No, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the school committee, um, thank you so much for indulging me on a visit through the, the Health Center and to look at the float today, so I really appreciate that. Tonight before you, for informational purposes, are hires of a part-time root, bus driver, a maintenance mechanic, nurses to support a health entry data plan, one X L E learning specialist, and winter coaches.
What is that, one X L?
You know what I asked, and I haven't, I'm prepared for you.
Oh, good.
It's a computer support software that's used in English, math, and science, and this person, Ms. McDonald, will be the expertise and be working with a professional, um, community, um, learning communities. Running blinks today. And work with them to, to teach them this program and the software. They feel like it's a very worthwhile software, so they, they want to give it a try for the rest of the year and see how it goes, and see if it's something we want to purchase for next year.
Okay, thank you. What do we have? We have some resignations.
Resignations. Um, I have a health-assisting LPN program administrator, two cafeteria cooks, one part-time security officer, and a CAD instructor. Budget update, we're meeting with department head...
Can I just ask you, the, the two cafeteria cooks, um, are they leaving because of the changes in, um, what we're doing?
Retired.
Oh, they're retiring?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Budget update, we're meeting with department heads and administration to finalize department submissions to bill the FY twenty budget on December nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. There's no MS update at this time. On Wednesday, December fifth, I attended the MASs Social Emotion Learning Advancing Cultural Proficiency in our schools with Patricia Lowell at Assabett Valley Technical High School in Marlboro. On Tuesday, December eleventh, Whittier hosted the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association meeting with administrative assistants. We had approximately a hundred and five people here in this, in this dining area, and probably about thirty superintendents from the Merrimack Valley, along with their administrative assistants. It was a wonderful event. Every, you know, I can't thank culinary enough, I can't thank Lisa enough. The event went off without a hitch. We even brought the float out here, so as they were walking in, they could see the float. So, um, it really, Whittier definitely shined, and this was yesterday, so, you know, I just really want to thank everybody that was involved in that. Did you just meet with all other committees and the superintendents at camp? Uh, most. Yep. Yep, most. Yep, not from, so, there's two, there's two round tables. There's the Merrimack Valley Roundtable, and there's the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable. So I belong to both, so some belong on one side and some belong on the other. This was the Merrimack Valley Roundtable. Yeah, no. Um, where was I? On Tuesday, December eleventh, Kara Cosmas, Bob Hardy, and I had a conference call on the roof gas repair. We're looking at a start of the project on December twenty-fourth, and to have it completed by December twenty-eighth, if the materials can be delivered on time. Ms. Cosmas will review the bids in her report. We're just about done with the new Allied Health Center. The Capital Skills Grant covered much of the dental equipment and part of the renovation. Whittier Tech District budget covered much of the rest of the renovation. We were able to do this by pre-buying much of this year's equipment using last year's funds. There have been a few changes, orders that have increased the budget a bit, and I was told that that's natural. I didn't like it much, but, but the center will be used for both day and night school programs. As you can see, when you came in, we're working on a new digital sign for the entrance. I want to thank carpentry, electrical, and masonry for their hard work on building the sign. I want to thank the class of two thousand and seventeen and eighteen for a portion of the materials for the sign. I would like to bring the proposals for the actual digital sign to the Plan Operations Subcommittee in January, so that we can make some decisions. I don't want to make that decision in a, by myself.
Is that the, looks like a building going up there just past the guard shaft?
Yeah. That's just the covering, so that they can work out there.
Oh.
Yeah, but it's going, it's going to be a sign, so. But the, the neat thing about it is we're going to use all of our trade areas, so we're going to use masonry, we're going to use carpentry, we're going to use welding. We're going to use electrical. So it's really, it's become a whole-school kind of project, so that's, that's the neat thing about it. But the actual digital sign is costly, and there's different kinds, and I think that the school committee should be involved in that piece of that, part of that. I received word, um, last Thursday, that we were not invited to the MSBA pipeline again this year. So, um, we are told that we're close, but other schools were needier than we were this year, so we will again apply next year. So number five or six. I was told when I spoke with them that we have done everything that we need to do to just resubmit our application. They have the information. I think it's just, there are some schools out there that are just needier than we are. So, yeah.
What is that?
MSBA is a mass school building authority, so we have been putting in a statement of interest, looking for a renovation of this building, um, because we haven't really had any renovations. So, you know, the building looks beautiful on the outside, but you get behind the walls, and we've got some issues going on, so, um, you know, we'll keep trying. We'll keep trying.
Were you able to ascertain from them? Did anyone in the area get any?
I know at one of the Havrell Middle Schools did, yeah.
Really?
Well, the elementary schools, whatever, yeah, Constantino.
Maureen.
Yes.
I think one of, in just talking with some people that are connected there, one of the problems here is, the building's been maintained, so, that's a problem.
Shame on me.
That's, that's really one of the problems. There was twelve communities that were accepted this year out of over sixty applications. One of those communities was on its ninth time putting through an application. The average is at least four, um, to, to get in. But I, I think the problem that we have here is the fact that the building's been, well, maintained. If you look at pictures of the inside of the building, it doesn't look like it's falling apart. It's an old building, and that's really how they, they base a lot of their...
Decisions.
Their decisions on, is those drastic emergency, uh, repair situations, so, um...
And that's a struggle we...
I think without it, I think we're gonna have a, without one of those situations, I, you know, not overly optimistic that it's gonna happen anytime soon.
And I think that's the struggle we have, is, um, you know, I can't in good conscience just let the place go, you know, because, you know, we don't have a second option if, if something was to happen to this building, we can't go anywhere else. So, um, you know, we're gonna continue the good fight, and hopefully eventually, we'll, we'll get put into that pipeline, but, you know. Disappointing, though.
It is disappointing.
Um, I would like to have Tia Roy, who was recently hired as our Community Service and Post-Secondary and Early College Program Advisor, to attend our January meeting, to explain the work she is doing, if that's okay with the committee, to put her on the agenda.
Okay. What's her name? Tia Roy?
Tia Roy. And on a very positive note, you slipped on me, Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito will be coming to Whittier again, and this time it will be part of their inauguration. So they are planning on coming on January second. We invite you to attend. It's going to be a pep rally. Another pep rally. He seemed to like it very much. He's coming back for another one. So, um, that will be January second, um, here at nine o'clock, so you're all more than welcome to attend that event.
Okay.
Sorry, you said nine AM? Yep. I hope it's as good as the last one. I know. That was awesome. That was awesome.
It was glowing.
He was. He was beaming. And that's all. Oh. Are you upset? Lisa was just gonna say something. Um, I have, I, looking for approval for acceptance of donations. The donations list is on dated December third from the business manager.
Moved.
Any discussion on the donations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? No? Unanimous? Great.
Also before you today, I have establishment of a scholarship, and this is according to the school committee policy. The will, the will of Robert C. Takheian left a ten thousand dollars to Whittier Voke to establish a scholarship in the name of Varis Takheian. I'd like to thank the estate of Robert C. Takheian for this very generous scholarship. Respectfully request the school committee's acceptance.
Done. Any discussion on this?
Yes.
Just a question about it, um, so it's, it's ten thousand dollars, which is very generous. Just wondering, is that gonna be broken up into, typically, the kids get like a one thousand dollar thing?
Yeah, we will work with, with the, um, the person that gave us the scholarship and make sure that we do what they have asked us to do.
Okay.
So, I don't, I would assume that it would be broken up.
Yeah, and if this isn't a, um, a yearly, this is just a one-time donation, right? This is not something that's gonna be revolving each year?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, just, I'm just checking, it didn't, it didn't specify. Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? No? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions, none? Unanimous? Thank you.
I have a few, uh, two field trips, um, for the ski club and snowboarding club. On February second, Saturday, they'd like to go to Waterville Valley in New Hampshire, so I need approval for Waterville Valley.
Second.
February second.
Is this an overnight, a day trip, or...
Day trip.
A day trip.
Mr. Erlich. Do we have the proper paperwork in line?
We certainly will before they go.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have a motion?
Mm-hmm.
The second?
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Hearing none? Okay.
I have another ski trip, on March third, to Okemo Mountain in Vermont.
That one's gonna be over.
Move to accept.
Move to accept. Second. Approve. Mr. Early has a question.
Yes, Mr. Early.
Do we have the proper paperwork in line?
We will have all the proper paperwork before they go. And what's the date on this one?
That one is March 3rd.
Two, two, and three, three. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? All right. Very good. Are you all set now?
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Legatus, you're up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch, the rest of the school committee members. As you know, the Whittier Fall Sports are complete. I just want to congratulate the students and the coaches and the parents for another successful fall sports season. The boosters, last Thursday, we had the sports banquet, and if you attended the sports banquet, there were over 300 parents and students and coaches there, and it was quite an event in the cafeteria. I know Andrew's shaking his head, he was there. There was a lot of meatballs and everything left over the next day, so everybody was eating well in seconds, so thank you for that, Booster Club and everybody, for just a great season. Winter sports have started, they started the Monday after Thanksgiving, and as Andrew said, our numbers are very good. So our numbers in the female sports and the male sports are very good, but we're very young, so, which is a good thing, so we'll be able to coach and teach and cultivate them. The tours for the eighth grades students continue, and should be completed by holiday break by next week, and has been a wonderful opportunity for potential students. It's nice to see all the little ones coming in and see Whittier, what Whittier's all about. The Holiday Fund that you've heard about, I just want to congratulate the administrative team, the guidance department especially, and the faculty. The faculty all stepped up to the plate, along with some private donors, that got our Holiday Fund off and running this year. This fund was hopefully, which they, what it did is hopefully it alleviated a lot of the students and some of the families and some of the burdens, and will have presents under the trees this year. I want to thank all that have donated in the fund, in the foundation, and Kara, and a special thanks goes out to Christine Morrison, our guidance director, who was able to collect a certain number, over 60, 70 kids, that are needy and that are gonna be taken care of for the holidays, so we are very happy about that. Kara Cosmas, the admin team, and as well as Elaine Kevikus for coordinating this process. And when we say we truly are a family, we are a family, so it's an amazing thing that everybody has come together to do this year, once again. So that's all I have, very busy, but we're getting there.
Thank you very much.
I just have one question.
Yep.
If all students were, the cards that were handed out, all students are taken care of?
Pretty amazing. Yes, all taken care of. Amazing. By Friday, Ms. Lynch and myself, we got the list from the director of the guidance department. She said, everybody's taken care of.
Because I inquired about a card?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes. So we were able, we actually were able, fighting over who's gonna split up who, and I'll go to Walmart, we'll go here, so everybody's taken care of. So I appreciate you asking that. Yes.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Awesome.
Very much.
Well, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays to everybody.
Same to you. Ms. Cosmas, you're up. Our illustrious business manager.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, members of the committee. I have just a bid result for you this evening. As Ms. Lynch alluded to, we have a repair project that we are doing on the roof, and the bid is entitled Whittier Roof Piping Improvements. We sent requests for proposals to three companies, North Mechanical, Atco, and Charter's Brothers. We awarded the contract to North Mechanical, whose bid price of $47,500 was the lowest responsible bid. This obviously is a repair that is time-sensitive. We want to have it finished on the roof before the heavy winter comes in, so I especially want to thank Tammy Dentremont, our comptroller, because she really expedited those bid documents so that we could get this out and back, so hopefully they can start the work next week. And that's really all I have for you. Unless you have any questions, I wish all of you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I do have a question, Kara. Thank you. On that repair work that they're gonna do, do they actually have to do anything to the roof, or are they just tying down those pipes?
I believe, go ahead, Maureen. I'll chime in. So this part is just fixing the pipes. Once the pipes are fixed, we're going to have to look at the, what, because right now we don't know what repair we need. We know we're gonna have to do some repair, but until they're lifted up, we're not gonna know what kind of repair we're gonna need, so that's gonna be part B.
All right. Dick?
When you say you don't know, it could be another bid after?
There could be, but I don't expect it to be, you know, this costly. I don't expect.
Engineering firm looked at it, correct?
We have an engineering firm that is tied into this whole pipe restoration piece of it, and then once that's done, we will again check on, you know, do the same thing and look at the...
Thank you.
Everything stamped, as they say.
All set?
All set. Thank you. Any more questions from anybody? No? Okay, all set. Kara, thank you very much. Okay, we have the annual agenda items for January. We will have any policy updates if they're needed, a variance analysis, a budget review, and superintendent update on your goals, correct? Okay. Subcommittees. Executive subcommittee has not met. Instructional and personnel? Dr. Testaverde?
Has not met.
Plant operations, Mr. Tucker?
Have not met, but if I understand correctly, we'd like to have a short meeting before the next regular school committee meeting.
Right.
About 6:15 or...
Yeah, so 6:15 for the plant operations, but we need to have an executive, because we're starting the budget for 5:00 for the January meeting.
Okay. So the executive subcommittee will be at 5:00?
5:00.
On the night of the January meeting?
January 9th.
January 9th.
Yep.
Okay.
And then a 6:15 plant operations, so we can discuss the sign and where we're gonna go with that.
Okay. Salary and negotiations, Mr. Early.
At this time, we have not met. Need a meeting, we will schedule one.
Yep, we don't need one right now.
Thank you.
Okay, and policy, Mr. Irving?
JJKL. We met briefly, we met briefly last month, but we presented the second reading, so there's been no meeting. I don't believe we need one unless for January.
Yeah, I would like to have a meeting at 6:00 in January. What we're looking to do is do a rental fee policy or procedure, but it goes through policy, so...
6:00 policy on the 9th.
Okay.
It will be a rent over rental.
Okay, good.
6:00 PM, wow, okay.
Who's your night?
And the next meeting is the 9th. It's 6:30 earlier for everybody else. We have no new business, no executive session?
Move to adjourn.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
Early today.